Welcome to the Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, meeting of the Town of Corder Madara Planning Commission. Adam, would you please call the roll?
Good evening. I sure will. Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Bendel.
Here.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you. At this time of every meeting, we open it up to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. If you have something you wish to say that is not a part of this meeting tonight, then you have three minutes to say so. I'll open it up and see if Tracy has any hands up for this part of the meeting.
I'm checking here. And I don't see any hands raised and I have no email has been received at publiccomment@tcml.org.
Okay. So with that said, your time is up and we will close the public comments section of tonight's agenda. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a public hearing. I'm going to read this off and then we have some other actions to take. It is a public hearing for 21 Buena Vista Avenue, a design review application for residential addition totaling 1,698 square feet and a variance application to waive the second required parking space at 21 Buena Vista Avenue. Mr. Rizzo, are you going to recuse yourself here?
Yes, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, Mr. Rizzo is the architect for tonight's project and he will take himself out of the commission platform and he will sign in under a spectator, as I understand it.
That's my understanding as well. Peter, this is Tracy speaking and Ann can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll I'll move Jim to an attendee where they'll be able to have his camera off.
Yes, Tracy, you're going to move me. I don't need to log in and login. I mean, log.
Correct.
Okay.
It'll it'll rejoin you.
That's the correct procedure, as far as the brown act covers this sort of meeting, that is.
Okay. We'll wait for Tracy to accomplish that.
All righty.
It's done.
Complete.
Okay, that's great. So, this item tonight, 21 Buena Vista Avenue, is under the oversight of Senior Planner Martha Fotogli.
I will start sharing my screen. Everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Good evening, Chair Chase and members of the commission. This evening, you'll be considering a design review application for 1,698 square foot addition and a variance application to waive the second required parking space at 21 Buena Vista Avenue. The applicants also propose to construct a 797 square foot attached accessory dwelling unit that will be integrated into the lower level of the residence. Inconsistent with state law and the town's ABU ordinance, the proposed ABU will not be reviewed as part of the design review application. The project site is located within the Chapman Park neighborhood with access from Buena Vista Avenue. There is one single family home located adjacent to the project site at 17 at 17 Buena Vista Avenue. Located south of the project site is 23 Buena Vista Avenue. This is a vacant parcel. There was a home on this property that had a severe fire in the late 90s and the town subsequently issued a demo permit for that structure and houses have never been reconstructed on that parcel since that time. And located east of the project site across Buena Vista Avenue are additional single family homes. The project site is developed within an existing two-story structure. The lower level includes a single car garage and crawl space and the living area is located on the upper floor and it's just over 900 square feet of living area. Marin maps lists the average slope at 16% and the majority of slope occurs in both the front and the rear of the property and the areas where the addition are proposed are relatively flat. The picture on the left-hand side shows the existing front elevation taken from Buena Vista Avenue. On the upper right-hand side of the screen is the south side yard setback is the area located between the residents and the property to the south at 23 Buena Vista Avenue. And on the lower right-hand side is the view of the deck, the rear deck, and also the backyard and it's taken from the southern portion of the rear yard. The project site is zoned R1, moving density residential. The proposed primary residence is consistent with the majority of development standards with the exception of parking for which a variance has been requested. The existing north side yard setback is four feet, 10 inches where five feet is required. And in 1970, when the primary structure was constructed, there was also a variance application that was approved that allowed the two-inch encroaching into that setback. And the proposed third story of the residence meets five-foot setback. Consistent with state law, the town's ABU ordinance allows for both the exceedance of 800 square foot exceedance of lot coverage and floor area ratio for purposes of constructing an ABU. The proposed lot coverage for both the primary residence and the ABU is below the maximum 40% of the lot and the proposed floor area ratio is compatible with the ABU ordinance and that the exceedance of floor area is 735 square feet where 800 square feet is allowed. The proposed front yard setback is 15 feet where 15 feet is required and it appears that there's actually a larger front setback than this and this is due to the fact that Buena Vista Avenue is have a width of 30 feet and a 50-foot easement and the distance from the edge of the roadway to the front property boundary is over 17 feet. The proposed south side yard setback is five feet. The proposed rear yard setback is just over 39 feet where 25 feet is required and again, the existing residence has a setback of four feet and inches. There are two large oak trees on the property that will be maintained. In the front of the property, there's a 57-inch circumference oak tree and in the rear of the property, there's a 63-inch circumference oak tree and I've shown these oak trees, the green circles on the site plan. As part of the project, the applicant proposes to expand the driveway from 16 feet to 20 feet. In order to accommodate this, some vegetation located north of the existing driveway will be removed and in addition, a retaining wall will also be removed. The applicant will be constructing a low-level retaining wall in the front setback and this new retaining wall has a maximum height of three feet and it'll match the existing retaining walls in the front setback. And the applicant is also proposing permeable pavers and some new landscaping in the front yard. There is an existing privacy screen located along the northern property boundary and the applicant is also proposing some additional vegetation in this portion of the site. The proposed floor plan of the first floor consists of crawl space, the garage, which is 334 square feet and is not being increased in size. And there's some additional living area proposed on the new, the first floor, which includes an entry, hallway, stairs and storage and a laundry room. In addition, the ABU is also shown here on the first floor plan and it's shown in brown. The proposed second floor is just over 1,800 square feet. It includes a freight room, a kitchen, a master suite with a closet and a bathroom, a guest room and a bathroom. And the proposed third floor is is just over 700 square feet and of that, only a portion of floor area is included. Only a portion of that square footage is included in floor area. Only areas that have a ceiling height of seven and a half feet or more are included in the floor area. And this floor includes two bedrooms, a bathroom and a lot. The proposed project is a 1,698 square foot addition. It includes a 39 square foot addition on the lower level and 916 square foot addition on the existing second floor and a new third floor, which is 743 square feet. The majority of additional square footage is being added to the rear of the property facing the west, the west elevation facing the rear of the property. The project repurposes the existing foundation. It minimized its site work and grading and it preserves the existing large oak trees on the site. And you can see one of the oak trees on the rendering on the left. The proposed materials for the project include fiber cement siding painted gray, white trim, dark gray composition shingle shingles, aluminum clad entry door and windows, repurposed hardwood decking and stainless steel cable railing. The east elevation faces Buena Vista Avenue. As part of the project, the applicant is proposing a new entry with a covered porch. This elevation includes three dormers in on the third floor and the maximum height of this elevation is 27 feet and 11 inches. The north elevation faces the neighbor to the north at 17 Buena Vista Avenue. The maximum height of this elevation is 26 feet, eight inches. The applicant is proposing three windows on the lower level and consistent with the town's ABU ordinance, the applicant obtained written approval from their neighbor to have non-clear story windows on this elevation. The second floor includes seven windows and two of these windows are set back on a wall plane that approximately 30 feet from the property boundary. And the third floor includes a multi-pane window. The south elevation faces the vacant parcel. This elevation includes the entry doors on the ABU on the lower level, eight windows on the second floor, which are all fairly modeled inside, and two windows on the upper elevation. And this elevation has a maximum height of 23 feet, three inches. The west elevation faces the rear of the property. The lower level ABU includes two, two windows and a door. Extensive glazing is proposed on the second floor to take advantage of views out of the rear of the property. And there's also a deck on this elevation as well and then three dormers are proposed on the third floor and the maximum height is 29 feet. There are story poles that were constructed and the story poles were certified by a surveyor. Picture on the left is of the the front elevation from Buena Vista Avenue and the picture on the right is the south elevation taken from the vacant parcel. As part of the project, the applicant reached out to their neighbors. They provided a letter to all of the neighbors that included a project description, a rendering and the color and material board. The applicant also met with her neighbor at 17 Buena Vista Avenue and they walked around the project site and discussed screening between the two properties. And the applicants will be installing additional vegetation along that northern border with consultation from their neighbor. The applicant reached out to the owner of 23 Buena Vista Avenue and sent two certified letters and they did not hear back from that neighbor. And the owners did receive letters of support from the majority of neighbors. All the neighbors that provided a letter of support are shown in blue on this map. The project also includes a variance request to waive the second required parking space and allow the site to maintain its existing original configuration of non-conforming parking. Their parking requirement for the site is two parking spaces, one of which must be covered and the second space not be located in the front setback. The special circumstances that exist are the lot size, the topography and the distance from the roadway to the front property boundary. There is a discussion of the special circumstances in both the staff report and the resolution and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. In order to approve the project, the planning commission must make the required designer view and variance findings. Staff is able to make these findings and there's a discussion in the staff report in the resolution and I can answer any questions related to them. And staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 21004, approving designer view application PL 2021 0007 in variance application PL 2021 0009 for residential addition total 1,600 five, 1,698 square feet and a variance to waive the second required parking space at 21 Buena Vista Avenue. That concludes staff's presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you very much. I would like to ask the commissioners before we proceed if, because of the unusual circumstances here, if anybody had had a discussion with the commission member, Jim Rizzo, regarding this project prior to considering the project or during consideration of the project? Does everyone know?
I haven't.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's an unusual situation, but we're all objective. So I will start with you, Phyllis. Do you have any questions for staff regarding this application?
Yes, it's more of a general question than just this particular application. Since the fourth foot, 10 inch is grandfathered in on the side setback instead of five feet, how come the variance that was given for the garage before having just one parking space that 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 doesn't get grandfathered in as this house has some changes made?
There's a standard in the zoning ordinance that states that whenever there's an addition of 120 square feet or more that the property needs to be brought into conformance with parking. So that was the the trigger for for needing to either meet parking or apply for a variance to allow the existing non-conforming parking situation to continue.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Margaret, do you have any questions for staff?
Well, to continue that parking question, so ordinarily, this permit would require or this review would require two covered parking spots. Is that correct?
So of the two required parking spots, the the second space can be uncovered. However, it cannot be located in the in the front yard setback.
And does the ADU, the idea of the ADU there require an additional parking spot?
It does not. The ABU is located within a half mile of a transit stop, so a parking space is not required for the ABU.
So what the, what the proposal is, is to to have two off-site off, two uncovered parking spots in a driveway.
Correct.
And one in, but both of the uncovered parking spots would encroach on the public right-of-way?
Yes, they're located mainly on the the private property, but they do extend a little bit into the the right-of-way.
And how much is a little bit?
Probably about two feet.
Two feet? And how how wide is the sidewalk there?
Well, so the distance, so that there's over 16 or 17 feet between the the roadway and the front property line. So the spaces, it looks like it's the the applicant's driveway that they're on. They don't get anywhere near the the sidewalk.
And and one other question, the front, the the rendering of the front facade of the building, and I'm just checking this to be sure. The proposal is to have, yeah, it looks like the garage is as big as or smaller than the front entrance. Is that correct?
Um. They look pretty from rendering, pretty comparable as far as width. I can have the architect provide what those dimensions are when she speaks as well.
I think that the existing garage is staying pretty much the shape it is and the size it is.
Correct.
Yeah. Right. Okay. Anything else, Margaret?
No, that's it.
Okay. Dr. Bundy, questions for staff?
Just, I guess, a question of understanding in, I think it's nice that they've been able to incorporate an ADU into this new structure. I was looking at the entrance to it, which is on the, it looks like it goes around the north side of the building and across the back and I could see where it, the entrance went into the bedroom, but I didn't, couldn't tell on the drawings whether the pass pathway extended around the building to the south side where the sort of living room entrance is located and where the address is located.
There is a pathway from the right way to the the rear of the property. And then there are the two doors are proposed on the ABU, one on the south elevation and then another one on the the west elevation, the rear elevation. So from the the front, someone could walk to either of those entrances.
Okay, maybe James can walk me through that just as a point of information. I know we're not really critiquing the ADU, but this was just a point of interest for me.
Okay. So are there any neighbors besides the vacant lot that did not approve this application?
I think there was one other neighbor that didn't send a letter of support from that. Looks like in between 40 and 32, there's a residence that did not submit a letter and that we did not receive any any comments from anyone on them.
And that residence is uphill, up Buena Vista?
Yes.
Further, right? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So at this point, we'll ask for the presentation by the applicant to tell us about their application. So Tracy, who's going to do that for them?
It's going to be the homeowners and then also one of the architects, Joyce McCarron, also is available for questions.
Thank you, Martha. Yeah.
If you want to turn on your camera.
Hello.
Hello.
You got the whole head family here.
I'm Maren.
I'm Brian.
This is Charlie.
He's tired.
And our golden retriever is probably in the kitchen.
First of all, we wanted to just thank you, thank the commissioners for your time and review of our application. We are, I guess you could call us a new family to Corder Madara. We moved here about three and a half years ago and we just absolutely love this neighborhood. We love our community. And as you can see, we have a growing family. This is our firstborn.
He turns seven months tomorrow.
Yes. So sleepless nights over the past seven months have led us to realize that we need a bigger space. Our current house is, I I would say it's a one-floor house. I mean, it looks like two floors from the exterior, but we have no connecting stairwell, so we are really sequestered to this one story. It's about 1,000 square feet up here.
Which feels very small in a year of working from home, as you can imagine.
So with the birth of Charlie, we really were seriously considered moving. We, we just needed more space. We need more space. So we said to ourselves, okay, let's assess where we could live, where we can move and financial things aside, it it really dawned on us that we love our neighborhood. We love our neighborhood, our our neighbors. They're all amazing people and I think on top of that, we just love Corder Madara. We love living here. So we can't see ourselves moving and we decided that we would rather, you know, dig in and do what feels like the hard thing, which is to do this renovation for the benefit of ourselves and our and our neighbors. We, you know, we just want to stay here. We just love it too much. Along with that, with with COVID and with the situation we're all in, we need working space, you know, we need more space to do our 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 jobs and and both of us work remotely for companies here in the Bay Area. So a lot of our jobs are done. Maren's office is in our bedroom and my office is down in the in the garage area. So we, we want to build in some office space for us. And, you know, who knows what will happen with COVID, but you know, we're both people managers at the companies we work for and we we can see a future where the 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 reality of work environments have changed, right, man? So we have, we anticipate working more from home than we ever did before into the future. And so our companies are aligned that way. So hence the need for a bigger space, not only for our family, but for working. Did I miss anything there?
No, I think that's right. And so when we, when I was nine months pregnant, we started working with a Realtor to actually go through the process of listing our house because we needed to upgrade and through that process, we were introduced to Jim Rizzo to actually design some ideas and concepts that we could provide to potential buyers of what this house could look like. That's how we met Jim and through that process and and as what Brian was saying, we realized quickly that especially with this little guy in a couple of years from now, we're going to want to be going down to the town park. We're going to want to be hanging out in front of Cafe Verde and playing with friends. So we kind of took a a sharp turn and a small scope project kind of started to turn into a rather substantial one. And that's how we kind of started to build out this idea of a of a much larger home that we could live in for for a while.
Exactly. So that's our background. And when we went to 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 design this house, our number one priority was to have it blend in with the neighborhood. We, we, we wanted to we, I mean, we respect our neighbors so much that we, we actually really considered their thought process and talked with them each individually. And we wanted to build a house that fit in with the neighborhood, didn't disrupt the environment we're in. We have some, we're lucky enough to have a beautiful situation around us, including our our big oak trees. So we wanted to build a house that didn't encroach on those trees. And more importantly, just didn't represent like a giant pave over of any specific area. So we, we designed our neighbor, our our house in that way and you know, really, we didn't want to change the existing topography of where we live. We, it it's sort of hard to get a sense for it, I think, from the pictures, but we're in this wildland urban interface. Fire danger is a serious concern of ours.
Brian actually spoke at the town council a couple of years ago when we were going through the fire abatement to make sure that we, in our neighborhood, was was a safe area because it is a concern of ours.
Yeah.
So when we were designing the house, we made sure to make sure that we had, let's see, mentation single shingles and made sure that our our house was up to complete code and could protect our community.
Yep. So we chose materials that protect us hopefully. And I think with, you know, saving you guys from a, you know, a 10-hour story that we could probably tell you about everything that we went into it. I want to, I, at Maren and I, I want to address the concerns that might exist for this project like head-on and our privacy, the privacy between our neighbor 17 Buena Vista, that they're the Ewart family was important to us to consider. So we've been meeting with them face-to-face. We, you know, we talked with them. We were lucky to have a good relationship with them. And they've signed two letters of support for us, including the, I don't think it's technically considered a variance, but the clustery windows should be higher and they approved the lower version of those windows. And we've, you know, more important than their, that a specific approval, we've agreed to build a privacy screen between us and work with them to joint design something. And it it was a handshake and assigned agreement to do that. So number one, we wanted to make sure that they were comfortable with our design. And of course, we wanted to also be comfortable. We didn't want to be looking into them and they didn't want to be looking at us. So we, we really wanted to make sure that that was in, okay with them and also the height of our building. We wanted to make sure that it wasn't encroaching shadows onto their property. So we reviewed the light studies that our architects did with them directly. They had questions but no concerns and I think that's testament to our architects who helped design this house. And then lastly, the parking variance, which I think is a important, it's it's the only variance that I I think exists for our house and really, when we, when we view our front lawn, we, we didn't want to create this giant pavement structure, put in a retaining wall and change like the reality of our front yard.
And jeopardize those two oak trees in the front.
Exactly. The the oak trees have deep roots. Maren and I Exactly. The the oak trees have deep roots. Maren and I, we planted our own landscape a couple of years ago as you know, roll up our sleeves, which ended up.
Ninety-nine plants and it almost broke our marriage.
Might have been a little too much. The point is, is that our front yard is 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 open and we didn't want to pave it over to create parking. And that's why we've applied for this variance for parking. I think that and the fact that we're adjacent to a vacant lot means that there's not a lot of cars that pile up near our house and we're lucky to have that. So that's where we were coming from there. Let's see, in the interest of time, I think we can draw the line there. The last thing I wanted to say is, when we designed our house, we wanted to keep it to a, we didn't want to have this giant towering house. And that was a concern of ours. And we considered two-story designs closely with our architect. We landed on this third-story design with the dormers, how it is today. Because of views, because of the impact to the oak tree in the back of our lot, we didn't want to encroach on that. But we wanted our, we we specifically wanted our architect to design sort of a minimalistic third story. So instead of having a blocky squared off top, we really liked the idea of having the the pitched gable with the dormers.
So it's meant to be two stories with like kind of a built-in attic.
Exactly. So.
The only other thing that I would just quickly add is in terms of the ADU. So, you know, it's important to us. I'm an only child. Brian's parents live in in Colorado. Actually, both of our parents are dialed into this call right now. It was important to us to build out a space for them to move in in case we needed to support them as as we continue to live here. We're very fortunate that our our family is is very healthy. And so that is a great thing, but we are kind of future-proofing to ensure that we can support our parents as they get older and as we get older. And so that is why we had built out the ADU for that intention.
Yeah, and obviously, the ADU isn't under review for the specific proposal. So we we don't want to dive too deep into that, but we don't have any intention of renting this ADU or making it an Airbnb or anything like that. It's really designed to be a backup space for what Maren just said. So anything else that we missed?
Hi, Mom and Dad.
Hi, our our parents are on this call, so we just want to say, hey, Mom, hey, Dad, and thank you very much for considering.
Right.
Proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you for that long description there. So we'll ask, who's gonna make the presentation further for you? Anybody on the architectural side?
I think Joyce McCarron, who's an associate with the Rizzo Associates, might, will will represent us in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Martha, is that true? Joyce will join us here?
I'm on. I I don't have any specific presentation to make. I'm here for questions.
All right. So with that said, I will then turn to the commissioners and ask them if they have any questions of you or they have. So I will start with Phyllis and see if she has any questions for you.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Margaret, do you have any questions for the homeowners or for the architect?
Well, just the the question that I had before is, is, what what's the relationship in size of the the garage to the front entry? The front entry was bigger than the size of the garage is is.
Well, the garage, the garage door is, the the size of the garage door is staying the same size as it was, but if you go from the 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 columns at the covering the the entry porch over to where the the master bedroom is, you you have, it's it's smaller. It's nine foot four and three quarters for the entry porch and it's eleven foot nine and a half for the, you know, the space between the column and the the wall that comes out. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I didn't quite understand what you said.
The 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 entry porch is smaller than the space between the entry porch and the, because you have space on either side of the garage door.
It does, it did, doesn't really look like that in the rendering. So that's why I was asking. Okay.
Margaret, the the surround of our entryway looks bigger than obviously the actual door. The the garage, we didn't want to change for design reasons, but also it's it's the existing structure of our house that it's hard to tell, but that little alley where you look at our garage represents a foundation that's set. So we didn't want to minimize our, the impact. We didn't want to change the width of our our garage because it would require demolishing the the foundation there and the slab that's there today. So it is the same size as it is today and it, we plan on keeping it the same size.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Margaret? Okay. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for these folks?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts in regard to the vacant lot. I think it's great that you have this space next to you. It's really quite a large lot going down to the drainage swale below. And was just wondering if you had had an arborist look at the trees on that property to see that they wouldn't threaten your new home. And also, does someone maintain that or mow that regularly so that it isn't a fire hazard to your home?
Great question.
Yeah, so we have had a few arborists actually attend to our oak trees and and the existing vegetation to ensure that fire threat is is minimized. We haven't had an arborist look at the trees over on the vacant parcel. I think as Martha had had stated, we we reached out to the vacant parcel owner twice through certified mail and never heard anything back. And.
Yeah, well, I, Dr. Bundy, I think your question is like about fire, right? This this particular vacant lot is a blessing. And I would say very little bit of a curse, because actually, the risk of fire of this particular site has impacted our neighbors with insurance and fire insurance. Luckily, because of Corder Madera's recent, I think it was last year or the year before, they did a fire abatement of vacant lots. This lot actually went into a review by the town and by the fire marshal for the the owner of this property apparently wasn't maintaining it to the town's standards, to the fire marshal's standards. And so they actually abated the property to cut back the trees and cut back the, you know, the short grasses and the vegetation. But to your question directly, we have not had an arborist look at it, obviously, because it's their private property and their trees don't encroach on our like over our property line. So it is a sense of, it's a, it's a sore spot for the neighborhood because we're concerned about fire. But luckily, because of the town, they did abate it. And, you know, they might need another abatement in the next year or two. Who knows?
Good. The the other question I had, and this would be, I guess, for the architect, and looking at the the new, this is a new gas fireplace that you're having installed. Is that correct?
Yes.
It it seemed like the the chimney was much taller than would be necessary for a gas fireplace. It looked like the height that you would have if it was a wood burning fireplace, which we don't allow anymore in a new home or major remodel. So was, is that really the 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 code or was there aesthetic reason for that? Or, you know, was just that decision on how to design it?
It, the decision was because of the, it is a gas fireplace, but it was, we based it on the the height of a wood burning chimney. And if we, if we can bring it down, we would love to. But we were basing it on the the code for that.
Oh, that's, that's interesting. I thought the requirements for the gas burning fireplaces didn't have those same height requirements as a wood burning. But so I've learned something tonight. So that's the only question, or only thoughts that that I have on that. I think it's a nicely designed home and you've got a lot of space in it without creating too much bulk.
Thank you, Bob. After hearing all of that, I'm just gonna ask Phyllis if she has any questions after all of that.
No.
Okay, thank you. I do not have any questions for any of you. So thank you very much. And we will then now go open it up to public comment for this hearing. So if you are in the mood to make a public comment about this project, we'll open it up now. You have three minutes to make your comment. I have a timer here and we'll do so if you raise your hand or you email into publiccomment@tcml.org.
Thank you, Chair Chase. I don't see any attendees with raised hands. I'll go ahead and check for emails while we wait and see if anyone does decide to raise a hand. Again, that email address for those attendees on tonight is publiccomment@tcml.org. If you wish to comment but don't wish to speak, I'll be happy to read it into the record. I don't see any emails, nor are there any raised hands.
Okay, so there doesn't appear to be anyone wanting to chime in on this. So we'll close the public comment section of this meeting or this hearing and take it to, back to the commissioners to opine on their on this application. So I'll start with you, Margaret, and see what your thoughts are on this application.
I think it's a really nicely designed addition. I think it's done really well. I think it fit, does fit into the neighborhood. And I think everyone knows I don't like tall additions, but this one is done, I think, really beautifully. The only concern I have is for parking. When I drove up that street, it's one of those streets that's fairly narrow. People park on both sides. I always have concerns about if can fire engines fit up there? Can fire engines turn around? Can people get in and out? If there is a fire? That's the only concern I have. If the fire chief is not has looked at it and said it's okay, then then I'll just take his word for it. But that's the only concern I have there. And and as I said before, I think it's one of the nicest additional story houses that I've seen since I've sat in this chair.
Thank you, Margaret. Appreciate that. Dr. Bundy, your thoughts?
A nice project. The issue with the variance for the parking, I think the sort of additional space that is out there between the curb and the house does not, is not going to make it appear that people are in the public right away, or parking is in the public right away. So I can make the findings for this.
Thank you, Bob. Phyllis?
I like the house. I think it's a very good design. It fits into the neighborhood. And as far as the parking goes, there really is no change. In the sense that the ADU is there, but it's not going to be rented out. And I am assuming that the heads are a two-car family at this time. So they're gonna still be a two-car family and it's worked and yet that space is gonna be what, four feet wider, I think? What was it, from sixteen to twenty feet? Did you say, Martha? So I don't have to open the big plans. So I don't have any problem with that. I think, as I said, that it's been very nicely designed. The windows all seem to be put in ways that are not interfering with that one neighbor who's close. And you've worked something out with them for the clear story windows and some kind of, I guess, a plant with trees or planting of some sort to have some separation, which will be a lot nicer looking than having a fence. A tall one. So I certainly could make the findings and we'd be happy to make a motion when the time comes.
Thank you, Phyllis. I would agree with the three of you that this is well-designed. I think that the optimization of square footage is remarkable here. And craftly done. I think that the elevations with the bump outs and the dormers really is an added attraction to the basic box that the house could be without those things. So it's, it's, they're well-placed, well-done. And I think that this will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. I'm glad to see an ADU going in. And the parking, you're gonna need it for a babysitter. So there you go. I have that.
But if they go out, one car will leave when the babysitter comes, Peter.
There you go. All right. Being that we all seem to be in unanimous agreement here, do I hear a motion for this application?
I'll make the motion. In the matter of design review application, PL dash two zero two one dash zero 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 seven DRC for residential addition totaling one thousand six hundred and ninety-eight square feet and variance application PL dash two zero two one dash zero 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 nine to waive the second required parking space at twenty-one Buena Vista Avenue. And this is resolution twenty-one dash zero zero four.
Your second?
A second.
Thank you, Margaret. Mr. Wolf, would you care to call a role on?
For Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bando?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Yes.
And Chair Chase.
Oh, yes. And Martha, your job to read.
Yes, there is. Anyone can appeal the decision of the planning commission within ten calendar days. And there's a three hundred dollar filing fee to do so. And application forms are available with the planning department.
Well, thank you very much. Good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, Mr. Rizzo, can rejoin us?
Thank you. She'll be joining us shortly.
There he is. Okay. So it is time for commissioner reports. Dr. Bundy?
The last town council meeting was really devoted primarily to the selection of a new council member. And it's quite interesting, they rejected the most qualified technically, which was Jim Andrews, the former council member. And they also rejected the most qualified, that being Phyllis Metcalfe, in favor of like fresh face, but somebody that has been involved in the Home Key Project. And, you know, wanted to step up and do something more for the council. And and it really was that, nothing of of great significance, I don't think, unless I missed something, Adam.
Don't be afraid to opine there, Bob, about that.
No, yeah, no, I I think it was, we had, I think the other headline was just that there were eleven applicants. And and many well-qualified applicants. And so I think that that was a council seemed very pleased with that. And I know Todd was, and Rebecca as well, were pleased to see so many people expressing their interest in joining the council.
Okay, so then, Adam, do you have anything to report?
I only just have a couple of, go ahead.
I was gonna talk about a Zoom meeting I attended with David Vutin, my sanest name, right, Adam Vutin, from A-Bag?
Yeah, Button, yep. MTC.
And he gave a very interesting, he spoke for about an hour going over what A-Bag is doing, why it is doing it, how it is doing it. I know. I know Bob had signed up for it too. I don't know if he was able to watch it or not. But it is on tape and if anybody has the time is interested in seeing it, let me know and I will give you the information so you can watch it. But I think I really learned more about what they are doing. I still may not like it, but at least now I understand more of it. I can accept more of it and see what they're trying to achieve and how they're trying to do it. Adam has heard him before other times. He may want to add on to that.
That's great. And that, yeah, that Dave is, is the leading, the plan Bay Area 2050 project for A-Bag MTC. And he does, I think, do a very good job of being able to explain all the, the jargon and the complex sort of policy stuff that they, they do. But I, that is separate and apart in a lot of ways from the Rena process, which is more of the housing requirement process where we have to do eight year cycles, although the Rena, we argued this in the letter, is supposed to be consistent with the, the plan and is required by state law that it's consistent with the plan. So that's how those two different sort of planning programs are related to each other.
Okay, so I don't know. The result was, what did you get from him about his plan Bay Area 2050? What would you say that was?
It was an explanation of, an understanding of what they are doing and why and what they're trying to achieve. As I say, I may not like all of it, but I can accept it because I understand what they're striving for. Parts of it I can agree with, parts that I don't. I'm always very concerned when people do a lot of talking about creating rental housing. I think it's a mistake that's repeated over and over and over again. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have rental housing, but I think we are going to have to put some emphasis on home ownership. And there are ways to do home ownership that is affordable and that's what hasn't been looked at. I've been in touch with the Venus office up in Sacramento. And also my McGuire is looking at some ideas that I've shared before with you to see what can be done because I don't think we should ignore it. And you know, there has to be balance.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much Phyllis. Anybody else have anything to report on? No?
I'll just make a couple of just more scheduling and just announcements of, for the next couple of meetings, I guess. I, I think just to note on the agenda, you'll see that it looks like we will be seeing the continuation of the 22 Eptide project to the next meeting, which you know, is a good sign, but we'll, we'll just wait and see. There's still some more communication that needs to happen on that. But they have been in discussion, so we're looking forward to seeing that application potentially back. And Phil will be in communication with you about that if, if they put up story polls next week. I will be out actually next week, so please just, if you need to get ahold of staff, please reach out to Martha or you, you can always get ahold of me actually, but, but reach out to Martha or, or Phil or Tracy with any, with any needs that you have next week. And next month, I think you have all seen, I believe Martha sent out an email that we are going to try to have a joint objective design and development standards working group and planning commission meeting, the second meeting in April. So I just want to mark that for your calendars. I think we're, we're hoping to get a lot of, a lot of members of the public to come because we're sort of joining and we're going to bill it as a, as a good opportunity for the public to learn about objective design and development standards. The consultant will be there to help explain it and answer questions. Opticos, you know, Tony and Tony Perez and Stefan Pellegrino from Optico's Design. Dave Javid from Plan to Place will help facilitate some of the discussion as well. And so that's the second meeting in April, April 27th. And just going back to the Home Key for a minute, there will be a community forum for any Q and A questions. Just the working group is going to be providing just some information and trying to bring the community into the conversation that we're having as part of the working group. That's going to happen on April 19th, I believe at seven, six or seven PM. But it's going to be, those are all things in our newsletters that come out on Friday. So just be on the lookout for that. We have plenty of time to announce those and sort of continue to generate some interest in those meetings. And that's really all I have for now. And I, other than I think the message from today was that we're going to be moving into the what is it? The orange? Are we already in orange, the orange tier tomorrow, I believe? So continuing to make progress on that front, which is obviously exciting, but still everybody needs to, you know, do their, their social distancing and mask wearing as well. And so, but I know our business community is very excited about that as well. And I saw somebody shared, I think, council member Lee, if you all, he shared with me a article on the RH Gallery that was in Forbes Magazine. The, the restaurant was reviewed and got very high marks and they had a nice picture of the atrium with the Mount Tam view in Forbes. So that was kind of neat to see. And that's all I got.
All right, that's quite a bit. All right. Thank you very much. We have to approve the minutes for the March 23rd meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve.
I.
I'm in favor.
Okay, so unless somebody has something of significance, there's only 11 people participating in the meeting. So there's a mystery guest out there somewhere besides the 10 of us. So I will say let's adjourn this meeting.
Oh wait, wait. Question. So at least I was lucky enough to get this hard copy of the objective design and development standards. And I started reading it. Is there a Reader's Digest version? Hey, the Cliff Notes. I, you know, I, I understand and, and some of the statements are, you know, some of it's a lot of verbiage, which I'm having trouble with. Some of the statements are very straightforward and I really appreciate it, like the purpose statement I think is excellent and it really shed some light on what the purpose of this is. But um I, I think I need an outline or something. Is there something available that sort of puts it in pieces that can be followed and then put together or?
There currently is not, but that is something that, that we can work on putting together so that it's easier to understand and digest. You know, obviously I think members of the community are probably going to have similar comments. So you know, it's our goal to make it as easy to understand as possible. And obviously it's a lot of really complex information. So there are some challenges, but you know, we want to do what we can do to simplify, simplify it. And we do obviously have the ability to customize the toolkit as well. So portions that, you know, any of you find really confusing or staff, we can modify and take out sections to avoid confusion as well.
Yeah, and maybe?
That is a customizing part of the whole deal. Perhaps the staff who are very familiar with the process or Phyllis too, who was instrumental, as I understand it, could kind of take out the parts that really don't apply to Corder Madera. Because I realize this is for all of Marin County. And, and but, but I'm kind of getting lost in the differences that are very finite between the urban this and urban you know, and, and if the staff could have a little more, you know, cull it down a little, it would be, I think better to understand.
There are some charts in there that show you each one and their drawings of how close the buildings are to each other that explain each of those zones. So it's fairly clear, since I'm very visual, seeing that puts it in place for me. Now, I don't know if you're as visual as I am to find it, but there are at least one page, and I think there's even more than one page that shows you what those areas, because I think the ones that will affect us, what three, four and five? Adam? Trying to remember or Martha, which is?
Yeah.
Four and five?
Yeah, so it's, it will be the T, T threes and T fours that we probably ultimately will end up adopting. There's two T fives that have much, are much denser and allow heights, you know, upwards, I think of 75, 80 feet. So you know, as part of the discussion at our, the planning commission meeting in April, we're going to have a discussion about the mapping. And that'll kind of segue into which zones should be adopted in our toolkit that we ultimately adopt.
It's sort of a kind of a roadmap of how to get through. First you look at this and then you look at the piece inside of this and then you look at two pieces of, you know, kind of like that.
We hear you Margaret. I think that's a good comment and we can, I, I agree as part of the customization, we can work on that in terms of just creating something tailored more to Corder Madera. So that's a good suggestion.
And that's the purpose. I felt that since we can no longer use a multi-unit subjective decisions, they have to be objective. We have to come up with the objective design pieces. But you know, listening to Margaret's questions. And of course I've worked with this for what eight, nine months as have Martha and Adam. Is one meeting enough? I mean, I don't want to have a six hour meeting. But if people need this, what is obvious to me is not the people have not seen this before. And I'd rather have time to have it walked through by the consultant and Adam and Martha. So the community understand along with all the members of the commission. And would help if the council heard it at the same time too. So everybody understands what has to be done. And then maybe the next meeting decisions being made.
I think it probably could be a two meeting kind of.
We'll see.
Um, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, we, we tried to have the last meeting on it, you know, so that was an explanation of what the toolkit was and why we were doing it. And you know, the next meeting will be a further elaboration of that and trying to start to tailor, tailor it to Corder Madera. I think that, you know, these have all been widely noticed and publicized. Well, and they've been available to the public. The community chat Cheryl Longinati, she did speak up today and she has, she's reading it. We're getting a couple of people reading it and trying to understand it. So that's good. And hopefully we'll get a big turnout. And we'll take it one step at a time. Let's just wait, you know, if, if we need more time, that's fine. You know, we don't, we don't want to. But, but I think at some point it's, it's a matter of just, we have to, we're going to have to move again in response to the state legislation. That's the first phase. That's all we're doing is trying to get something in place so that we have something in place if somebody applies under the state legislation that requires us to do by right housing. So that's, that's why we sort of think it's, you know, hopefully that, that is the key message that gets people on board to sort of move through it. And then, and then we, you know, obviously we can always come back to it and, and if we want to apply it elsewhere is where we, we need to make sure that we are all everyone understands that we may have a bigger conversation on our hands. I mean, we'll likely have a, a big conversation on our hands anyways. I hope so. But I, I hear you. It is a lot to get through and it's a lot to understand. And you're right. I think that the real challenge is they're, they're really creating a whole new construct of like a framework of how to think about zoning and development standards and design. And you have to sort of really read it several times as Martha and I will tell you, we're, we're, we're doing it ourselves, right? So it's, it's not easy and it takes some time to sort of remember what this, the language, I think, you know, what is T three, what is T four? How does it relate to this and that and what comes with it? So we'll do it as much as we have to, to make sure people at least, you know, get it. And that's the big point of the next meeting and at the end of April. And maybe if you want, we could, we can put a, something on the agenda if we have time at the next meeting just for Q and A. If that's helpful for the commissioners and maybe general public, just to sort of, maybe we can get some, some of those questions out ahead of time before the 27th. So.
Well, my fear is, like you just said, it's been noticed, people, it's been talked about, et cetera. And not everybody, Cheryl Longinati. And I, I'm thinking back to one of the people who I think actually applied for the council. I read somewhere, somebody was complaining that nothing was said about the new city hall until it came before the council. And all of a sudden, it's just saying, now I remember, I think it was two years ago, Peter, that you and I were at a meeting where people were marking things up that were pasted on the walls. Where it was done in the beginning to see how many stories you wanted, what designs, there were different parts of the room had different drawings and pictures. This has been going on for a couple of years and the people are still saying, nobody told us about it. All of a sudden they're spending millions of dollars to build a new city hall.
You're not, yes, you're not going to avoid that Phyllis. I don't, I think that's just the nature of what we do. And you're, we're going to get those people who will say where, how come they're, you're thrusting this upon us and we've been at this for a year and a half. And we're doing our best to notice it as, as best we can. We'll continue to do so. We'll publicize it in different ways. We'll make it sound more interesting than it actually is. I don't know. We'll do, we'll have to throw, you know, I think we are going to retitle it and rename it, rebrand it and try to figure out how to get more people out. But at some point, you're right, we're still going to get those folks who will say they've never heard of this before and, and now they're worried about it. But that's just the nature of what we do. So we're going to have to.
Explained about the sign in front of the community center that nobody told them there was going to be a change. And that had gone on meeting after meeting after meeting.
Right, so we digress pretty far.
Yes, we have. Thank you.
We need to rein it in and put an end to this.
Thank you.
Lark. So, but I thank you guys for bringing this to the table in such an interested manner. I want to know where I can get a hard copy that I can tap through.
I'll, I'll drop you off a copy Peter.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Will you all have one?
I have one. It, it helps to have it. It's a big document.
It's like this thick.
Yeah. Bob, Bob, did you want a copy as well?
Uh, yeah, I think that, that'll help.
It is helpful to have it in hard copy. I'll, I'll get you both a copy and drop it off at your.
Colored sticky notes.
Yeah, I have, I have notes, see?
Yeah, if you use the colored sticky notes, you know, you can track like what building you're kind of working because you're going between the.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how I have to do it when I'm doing code analysis.
It's stressful to get through it.
I want to know who else is on this call.
I know, we should, so we should cut it short, but, but thanks and reach out. I, I think we will put something on the next agenda just to have it so we can discuss more. Okay.
Thank you very much. All right. With that said, I'm going to say goodnight to all and close this meeting. So goodnight, adjourn.
Goodnight.
Goodnight. Goodnight.